Welcome to Unmasking Government Schools with Sherri Few, USPI's weekly podcast that empowers parents to reclaim their children's education from government bureaucrats and social engineers, equipping you with the tools and resources needed to join the cause.
People are so busy hiding and disguising the truth from the community and the parents that it's frightening me that these kids are still being sent into these buildings. I fight every day to fix public education when a lot of my friends, family, and people around me are saying, "Let it self-destruct. Let it go away." And I'm thinking, "But in the meantime, we have children in these buildings."
Hi, everyone. Welcome to Unmasking Government Schools with Sherri Few. I'm your host Sherri Few, and I have another great show for you today. Joining me is Dr. Kelly Coles, an educator, activist, and businesswoman who has been on the front lines of exposing why education is failing our students. Dr. Coles is also the founder and leader of the National School Board's Leadership Council, where she trains school board members to bring accountability and real reform to their districts. Today, we're going to talk about teacher tenure, curriculum access, and how school boards can better represent parents and children. Before we dive in, please take a moment and give us a five-star rating. Share the episode with a friend, and don't forget to visit uspi.org to join the movement.
Today's episode is brought to you by US Parents Involved in Education. USPI's mission is to empower parents and local communities to break free from federal and national influences, thereby reclaiming parental authority over their children's education. For more insights from US Parents Involved in Education, connect with us at USPI on X and Facebook. To join the movement, visit uspi.org.
Welcome back to Unmasking Government Schools with Sherri Few. I'm your host Sherri Few. Our guest today is Dr. Kelly Coles, President of the National School Board Leadership Council. She has years of experience as an educator, a school board member, and a parent, and she's dedicated to equipping communities with the tools to take back their schools and restore accountability. Kelly Coles, welcome to the podcast.
Hi, Sherri. Hey, thank you so much for inviting me. I enjoy being invited just to share what I know with people so that they can help the students get better education.
Yes, and you know a lot, and I'm real excited about this conversation we're going to have. I was just telling one of my board members that every time we talk, I learn something new because you have a whole different scope of work than what we do here at USPI. But it's extremely important, and it fits into our mission. So I'm excited to have you share your knowledge with our audience.
I love doing that.
Oh, yes.
I love that. Thank you.
That's awesome. And our audience should know too that you and I go way back. I don't know if you remember, we met, we were both Rosies in a national organization named after Rosie the Riveter, meaning if I get this right, it was named after her because during the war, the Rosies were the ones that jumped in and took care of things that men couldn't do because they were fighting the war. So anyway, you represented Ohio, I represented South Carolina, and I can't even imagine how long ago that was. We won't date ourselves.
It was 12 years ago, Sherri.
12 years ago.
It was 12 years ago.
You're counting. I'm not.
I was on the school board then, and I was so honored to be invited to be a Rosie with the likes of you and Sam Sorbo and several people just like us. Yeah, it was an honor.
And Sam's still in the fight too. She's been a guest on my podcast. I've been a guest on hers. And in fact, she's really taken on the education battle. I'm really proud of the work she's doing. I'm sure you've seen her work.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. I work with her on different things.
Okay, so let's get into your area of expertise. So one of the most common debates is teacher tenure. So how should parents and school board members think about tenure and its impact on accountability?
So I'm glad people are finally asking about tenure. It seems like it's been kind of a tough point for people to get across or understand, "Why would we ever do such a thing?" So in higher ed, in colleges and universities, people are hired with their PhDs because a PhD means research, that you're doing research. And in order to be free and unfettered when it comes to research is you want to publish your results, but you don't want to take the chance that somebody won't like your results, and then they'll bombard the institution that you're in with negativity, saying, "Hey, that's not true. That's not accurate. Why did she publish that? Why did he publish that?" So it was done to protect researchers from the backlash that might come from publishing honest empirical research. So I understood that's why it existed in higher education, to protect your job from people who didn't like the results of your research. But then it kind of went down to K through 12, and it really makes no sense in K through 12. When I was on, I was on two school boards. When I was on those school boards, we had people inside the district faculty saying, "Well, we can't help what principal we get, and we might have a principal who is biased against us." And I said, "Welcome to the real world. That's how private industry, and that's how capitalism works. You could have supervisors who don't like you for one reason or another and unfairly terminate you." But the beauty of it is, is that you can find another job. You don't have to stay with that job, or if you're smart, you can appeal that. And there are different processes and different institutions for appealing that. For example, in Miami University where I was, I appealed my annual review. And the dean was the one who heard the appeal from me against the department chair over the review that he had done over me, and she overturned every single category of his decision. So as long as there's a fair appeal process, then tenure's not even necessary in higher ed, because there's always the chance that you have a chance to appeal and make the case that you deserve that job and you deserve to stay in that job. But what happened, Sherri, is that the teachers' union got involved, and this is one of the feathers in their cap, and it's how they keep their junior faculty muzzled. Because in every state, there's usually some law that says if somebody applies for a continuing contract, they must do so, and they give the timeline. So for example, in Ohio, the timeline is you must have been a teacher for seven years. Only three of those in the district you're applying for tenure. And they call it continuing contract because that's confusing to the consumer. Usually, people know what tenure means and absolutely object to it out here in the public or private sector. We don't understand why the heck you would need tenure. And they're all saying, "Well, it's because we could have unfairness." And I think, "Right, then you make the case that that was unfair." It's just that simple, the same process you would do anywhere else. So why would the teachers' union want tenure? Because what it does is it muzzles junior faculty, and it disincentivizes senior faculty from doing anything different. It allows them to be lazy because it's extremely difficult to fire them. Now, in some research presented to the Ohio Department of Education and all of us attendees, and there were thousands of us in the audience. So in a presentation in 2012 to thousands of us, that's board members, administrators, teachers in the audience, Stone Hill Research presented their summary of results on research on teachers' tenure and years of service. And they said that years of service were negatively correlated with teaching effectiveness. So senior faculty already have a hill to climb on effectiveness in education, because I think senior faculty are very valuable. But if you give them tenure, it would certainly disincentivize them from finding new ways to get children to learn. So instead of the whole system being incentivized by progress towards academic success or by, you know, what the product you produce, it's incentivized by staying just another year because they automatically get raises. And when you give them tenure, I went through this. I went to the rest of the board. So a board member's job is to convince the others to go with your rationale. I went to the rest of the board, and I said, "Guys, can you tell me how tenure helps children learn? I'll support it if you can convince me that tenure helps children learn." Everybody in the room, including all the administrators, were absolutely silent. Nobody could say that tenure helps children learn. I said, "So I don't," and I was in a tenured system, "I don't understand why we do it, why we have it. Don't we all know that it actually muzzles junior faculty? Because they're not going to rock a boat. They want this continuing contract. They're going to keep their mouth shut." And then we also know that senior faculty, like, get, almost expectedly, kind of lazy. "Why should I do any more than I have to? I'm tenured." And I said, "So why do we do it?" And again, they had no answer. I said, "Guys, I think we need to do away with it." And immediately, you get this jump down your throat, "No, we can't do that. It's the law." I said, "No, the law only says that they can only apply for a continuing contract after they've been in teaching for seven years, and that they can't apply in your district until they've been in your district for three years. That's the application process. It doesn't say you have to give it if they apply." And so we brought in legal counsel. Legal counsel said, "Oh, no, you wouldn't want to do that. It'll cost you hundreds of thousands of dollars to fight that because the union will fight you on that." And I thought, "Hmm, I don't think so." But anyway, after our legal counsel left the room, I said, "Board, I think we need new legal counsel." And I had saved up several reasons that we needed new legal counsel, and I kind of said, "Every time she advises us, it's to protect the adults. It's not to protect the children. It's not to improve our academic outcome. It's always to protect the adults." And I don't think that's what this community would support. I think the community supports looking at ways to increase our academic outcome. And of course, we're always saying, "We're the best of the best of the best, so why would we need to improve?" So then I had to look up some academic results and say, "Okay, this is a problem." And they agreed. The rest of my board had not done that homework, and they didn't know. So they agreed that we would interview new legal firms. We interviewed four new legal firms. My question was always the same. "We want to get rid of tenure. How do we do it?" Three of the four said, "Oh, that's a battle that'll cost you a fortune. So it's always about the money. It's not about what helps children learn. It's about the battle that we might have in court," which isn't true. Even if they brought a grievance, I was pretty sure that the union wouldn't want that grievance to hit the newspaper, because community's not on their side on this. Communities hate tenure. They understand that it's the worst thing that could happen to our children, is protecting teachers that are bad teachers, because that's what we've done. We've protected teachers who don't commit to actually teaching and learning. So the fourth legal firm that we interviewed, when I said, "We'd like to get rid of tenure. How do we do that?" He said, "Well, you have to have a reason." My response was, "We don't believe in it." And he said, "I can defend that." And we said, "You're hired." On that one alone, on that one alone, because he clearly understood what his role was. His role was to support the majority of the board in our decisions we have made. And he said, "I can defend that," like he would go in and defend that. He would not encourage us not to do that. He didn't do that. He said, "I'll defend that." And so we said, "You're hired." So we stopped giving tenure for the next three years I was on the board because we didn't feel that it helped children learn. It was that simple. And that's what has to happen, is we don't have to give people continuing contracts. And I would say that we should never give a continuing contract. Their contracts should be based on outcomes. The argument, again, from teachers or faculty is that, "Well, you know, if they don't like me, they'll fill my room with inclusion students." So they just admitted that filling the room or putting inclusion students in there stops learning. They admitted it themselves. So one of our philosophies with the National School Board Leadership Council is we need to give special needs students special services, not necessarily shove them into a normal COG classroom, a general ed classroom. We need to give them special services, and that might mean segregation from the class. So and then you get both sides of the argument as, "Well, we fought for years to get students included into the regular classrooms because it does what?" Everybody can argue what it does. But I've been in those classrooms, and I see often what it does is it does disrupt the classroom's learning. And the teachers will admit that when it comes to their evaluation. They know their students won't perform as well when they have inclusion students in there. So they've kind of admitted through that, that the inclusion students, students that have some kind of a, not necessarily learning disability, but they'll have some kind of like ADD, ADHD, things like that, where they're disruptive to the learning. So it's just such a bad idea to give tenure. Don't let them tell you, "We don't have tenure." I've gone to many states, Sherri, and the people there will say, "Board members will say, 'We don't have tenure. That's it. But do you have continuing contracts? Well, yeah, we have that.'" So it's the same thing by a different title. And I, one, get sick and tired of being lied to. I hope my board members that join our organization are too and say, "Guys, that's the same as tenure. Don't try to fool the public. They're not stupid." And I think they'll be insulted when they find out that you've actually lied to them.
Yes, very well said and defined very well. It reminds me of a political consultant friend of mine, and you know, he often talks with me about education issues and, you know, getting my perspective. And he suggested to me, and he tells me this every time we talk, he says, "Well, when you get these new school board members hired, and especially if you take over the majority, first thing you have to do is get all new, you know, administrative staff, particularly the lawyer," he said, "That's the first job. You should search for someone who is like-minded that will support the things you want to do." And I think that a lot of new school board members in particular, you know, they just bow to whatever the lawyer says. The superintendent has hired the lawyer that's going to support what he wants to do and shame or put fear into the school board member so they'll go along with what the district says, because after all, he's the authority on the law. So that was a brilliant discussion. So let's move on to another hot-button issue, which is teacher pay. So most people hear the teachers are underpaid. I mean, I heard it even just recently from somebody that's like-minded, and there's so many issues I wanted to debate them on, so I guess they weren't so like-minded. But I didn't. So I want to hear your perspective, and then I'll share mine.
Sure. When I go to any subject, you know, I don't begrudge teachers their pay because they've negotiated that level of pay. So whatever they're paid now, I don't really object to. But I did pay a researcher recently from our NSBLC organization, and she goes out and she finds the research. So I was asking her, "Please find out if teachers are underpaid." And I've got the article. She wrote it, gave it to me, so I can send it to you, Sherri. But in her conclusion, they were not underpaid. In fact, there have been some articles that were very enlightening when they compared teacher pay to a physician's pay. And when you take everything out of the pay that a physician has to pay for, which is the liability insurance, which is the continuing education, which is pretty massive for physicians, and on their office staff and all those things, the teachers actually were paid $3 an hour more than the physicians when you divided it up by the time they work. So you take a teacher's salary and divide it by, it's really just more like eight months. They might say nine, but it's really eight when you take off all the chunks of time that they have off for, you know, Thanksgiving and spring break and Christmas and all the holidays, and physicians don't get those. But when you divide up that by hours, they were actually paid more than physicians. But another thing is, Sherri, nobody in the private sector and almost all the public sector cannot match that schedule, and they can't match those benefits. The benefits are tremendous, far more than anybody else. When I looked, so when I was on the board, I was negotiating some of that stuff. I was at least informing the other board members what the national average is. So at the time, our faculty and staff were getting a 90% paid by the community, 90% paid healthcare, and 100% dental, 100% vision, 100% Medicare, life insurance. We're getting just this package that was beautiful. I mean, who wouldn't want it? But nobody else has that. So I was looking at the Kaiser Healthcare Study. I think it's Institute or something like that, K-A-I-S-E-R, was looking at them. And at the time, they were saying that the national healthcare cost split, even including the public sector, which is far higher, was 75/25. And that was including both private and public sectors. And we know the public sector is so much higher that that bumped up or skewed that whole curve. So I was saying, "Guys, why are we still at 90? Why aren't we pairing our benefits to what the community sees in their households?" I mean, again, we're asking them to foot the bill for everything, but why are we asking them to keep inside these brick-and-mortar buildings at a system that they can't possibly afford themselves? We're asking for raises that are far, like four times higher than these households are seeing in their households. That is all reported on the Ohio Department of Education Cup Report. It's easy to see, and I could track it, and I could make graphs showing it. So I said, "Well, I'm not going to begrudge anybody their pay today because I didn't have any influence on that, and I didn't argue that it should be less or more. I wasn't involved in that." But good for them. They've got a good level of pay. And then lots of people, you know, in the community would complain about their level of pay that it was high, higher than they were seeing, which is true. In Ohio, for example, the average household, not average, median household, because that's a fair comparison, median household makes about $45,000 to $50,000. The average teacher salary is around $65,000 to $75,000, you know, somewhere in there. I can't tell you because I didn't look today. But it's significantly more for one person to work eight months out of the year. And we're talking about households that have often two wage earners. So the disparity is huge, and I'm not arguing for what they're getting paid now. I'm saying these people in the community can't keep up with their lifestyle inside these brick-and-mortar buildings because they can't keep it up in their own household. They're not keeping up with inflation on the outside of this institution. But inside the institution, we're offering raises that are four and five times higher. I don't think that's fair, and I can't look my community in the face and tell them that's fair, and I won't, because I don't believe it's fair. So I don't think they will once I explain it to them. So often, board members are muzzled because, "Oh, you can't talk about that. That's an unfair labor practice." Guys, take it. Take it. You have every responsibility and every right to talk to your constituents. Nobody can bully you out of that. You swear an oath to that First Amendment. Go tell your community what kind of raises you're giving. So Sherri, what is very deceiving inside these buildings is that these employees get automatic step raises. They will never tell the public that that's an automatic, "I already get 4%." And then they negotiate what's on top of that. But they will go out to the public and say, "Yeah, I get a 2% raise. Woo!" And they'll make fun of it. But they forget to tell them that, "Oh, I get this automatic 4%." So it's really 6%, see? And I said, "Okay, I'm not going to use school speak like you all do. You use school speak. I'm going to use regular language that could be defined in Webster's dictionary." Because again, I don't want our community to think that we're lying to them. I don't think that's, you know, a service to them. We have people in our community far smarter than any of us, because they often would send me letters and call me, "Wow, I didn't think of that." But it's true. Once I found out that they get the automatic 4% on average, this is in Ohio, and then what they're negotiating is 2% to 3% on top of that, I'm thinking, "Wow." And these citizens in Ohio are seeing a 1% to 2% increase in their incomes year over year. Ah, they can't keep up with inflation. But we're very lucrative and very generous with how we give raises inside these school districts. So are they underpaid? I'm not making judgment on whether they should be making less. I'm going to say the community doesn't support raises four and five times higher than they see in their own incomes. So from here on out, we should stop this. According to that article, they are not underpaid. They're certainly well-benefited. And again, nobody can be home every day by 3:00. So lots of them say, "Well," and have every weekend and every holiday, "Good grief." Nobody has that that I know of. But they'll say, "Well, we bring work home." And I've had people in the audience, when that is said, anytime I'm presenting, saying, "So do we. We all bring work home." I know in our household, certainly, my husband sits there and works right from his recliner when he's not at work, a lot. A lot of hours are spent working from home. That's not unique to a salaried individual, right? So that's not new, and that's certainly expected if you're a salaried individual. So that's where I stand. I don't think they're underpaid. I don't think they're overpaid. I think they are very generously benefited. Their schedule can't be beat, and their pay raises every year far exceed the community they serve.
Well, I couldn't have said it better. I'm not sure I can add much to that. I agree 100%. What I've often said is, you know, they work, in South Carolina, it's 180 days. That's how many days a year they work. And yeah, off at three, beautiful holidays, and the benefits are outrageous. I mean, to find a job with retirement benefits like it used to be when I was growing up is just very rare. I mean, people think that their 401Ks are retirement, but it's nothing like having, you know, a substantial portion of your salary through the rest of your life, which is similar to the military. So yes, the benefits are very expensive.
The state sets it, and the state in Ohio, for example, I happen to know these numbers, the state sets the contribution by your community at, I think it's 12% now, and the contribution by the employee, and I think it's 12% now. So that's 24% to 25% of your income goes into your retirement. When they retire, they have quite an extensive, a really attractive retirement system. It's very attractive. Now, whether it's going to be funded in the future, I don't know, because they certainly had the same Ponzi scheme going on that Social Security has. But that's up to their union. If they pay union dues, they need to look directly at their union and say, "Why is our retirement system going bankrupt? Union, that's on you."
Okay, so let's talk now about this idea of school board members having access to the schools that they've been elected to govern. I understand from you that superintendents frown on that. They prohibit it. You have to have permission. So explain that to us.
In a very bizarre move, the superintendents have now believed themselves to be king, and this is their kingdom, and no one will tell them how to manage their kingdom. It's a bizarre way of thinking that I think their superintendent's association and maybe legal counsel, maybe during their getting their certificate to be a superintendent, is embedding in their heads. But what elected official could ever say that they were told that they can't visit the buildings that they were just elected to be in? We can't imagine city council being told that they can't go into the city buildings. We can't imagine our House reps in the state being told, "You can't visit any of the government buildings in your area." Nobody would say that to them. But we have superintendents across the country, Sherri. I have at least 10 to 20 school board members coming to me and saying, "They're telling me that I have to arrange in advance. I have to give a reason. I have to be escorted through the buildings." And of course, they're saying, because common sense would dictate this, "What are you hiding? Why would you have to do that?" And the superintendents come back with this bizarre rationale that, "Well, you know, people like our faculty and staff and students feel threatened, feel threatened by a grandma, you know, walking through the buildings." They have badges. I mean, these board members have badges. And yet, they're being told that they have to be escorted through the building. They have to pre-announce, pre-arrange. They're like, "No, no, no. That's bizarre activity there. That never happened before." Well, you know, in today's age, everybody's kind of scared of new people. I said, "But you have substitute teachers, new people in there every day. You have subcontractors fixing stuff. They're there every day, new people. You have maintenance people who aren't in every building all the time, and there might be the first time a student saw them." That doesn't hold any water. That's a ridiculous, bizarre rationale. So why don't you want the, let's just cut to the chase. Why don't you want a school board member, who, by the way, is at the top of the organizational chart, superintendent, you work for them. They work for the community. The community hired them to be in those buildings, to inspect your work. How the heck could you evaluate your employees if you never get to see their work? Does that make any sense? You just have to rubber stamp and say, "Good job, superintendent." Like a bunch of bobbleheads, or I call them Stepford Wives. I don't think the community is dumb enough to hire those kinds of people. I think the community is smart enough to say, "Okay, you know what? She's a tough girl. I want her in those buildings." And it was only because, Sherri, I went through the buildings, like I was being told by some community members, saying, "You don't know what it's like to teach. You don't even know what these buildings look like." Just saying stuff like that. I go, "Well, that's perfect. Permission granted for me to go into all these buildings. I'm going to go in there, and I'm going to get involved. I'm going to sit in on some classes. I'm going to do some impromptu visits." But when I wanted a tour, I did go to the principal, but that certainly is not necessary for any board member. You should check in at the office. That's common sense. Check in and say, "I'm here. Sign in." But anytime anybody gets in the way of a school board member doing their job, they should get in trouble, not the board member. So in Florida, what's beautiful is they have a law, and the law says that board members have access anytime, anywhere, unannounced. And the law says that board members have access anytime, anywhere, unannounced. And if anybody interferes with that, they're the ones getting in trouble. That's what it should be everywhere. But Sheri, why would we need a law? That's common sense. I'm glad Florida did it because I can always point right to Florida, right? But I'm, I'm telling Ohio, I guess you need to write this law because the superintendents around here think that they own the buildings. And they get to decide who gets to come in and who doesn't. And they ignore that their bosses are the ones wanting to come through the buildings. So I just think it's ridiculous to have to write a law. But maybe we have to do that. But we need the community to get behind these board members and say, no, no. I hired, I elected this person to go through these buildings without a filter, without permission, without arranging, without an escort. No. I want them to go through these buildings. They are the boss of the boss. Why are you stopping them? That's a red flag. Community, get involved and start telling them, no, these board members need to go through these buildings. Go to the board meeting, stand at the podium and say, board members, are you going through these buildings unescorted, unannounced? Because if not, somebody is obstructing your official duties. Use that terminology. Don't let anybody obstruct you from your official duties. Your official duties are to observe, to govern, to go through here. Go ahead and document what you see that might be something you want to talk to the other board members about. It isn't their job to tell a teacher, hey, take that flag down, take that display down. Or why is your class so disruptive? It is their job to maybe document, take pictures or an audio and, and get proof that this, this is a problem. Take it back to your other board members and say, this is a problem. And how are we going to address it with policy, with bylaws, with handbook? Whatever it is that the board members are supposed to be writing, they need to get consensus with the board. If they don't, there's alternatives to making it public. If the board can handle it, and it doesn't need to go public, then handle it. But board member, if you're obstructed, you need to tell your community you're obstructed from going in the buildings. That's happening all over the country. There's no way that should continue.
Couldn't agree more. Very good points you've made there. So speaking of buildings, another issue, um, is all of the buildings, 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 buildings. So, you know, in my community, we have fought bond referendums from time to time, successfully sometimes, other times not. In fact, the one time we won, two years later, the school board or the school district came back with school district resources, our tax dollars to fight us, to pass the bond referendum the next time around. So one of the things that one of my friends and colleagues says in our community, when they're talking about building all these new Taj Mahal type schools, you know, it's, it's ongoing. It's just, uh, never ending. He said, you know, because we live in a historic community and we have houses that are, you know, a hundred and fifty years old that have been maintained and, and they're historic. And you would never think of tearing them down and replacing them with something more modern. And so, you know, there's lots of problems with building, and I, I don't want to get into, to your expertise. But go ahead and share with us, um, what you think about that situation.
Well, what I know about that, Sheri, is that these school districts all need an external financial reviewer. And, uh, you know, I happen to know of one that is really good at his job, but recently he's let me know about a school district that he is reviewing, that so they had a board majority vote for his contract. His contract was to go in and do just a, a sky high level review. So often, school districts have auditors. But those auditors are often encumbered by relationships, right? They won't get the job to audit that school in, in a couple of years again, if they come out with a real negative report. Right? They're always worried about their next dollar. Well, I know some auditors who aren't worried about that, who just want children to learn. And they want the children's center, the center of the finances. That doesn't help children learn, then we spend it. And going through like a checklist of what helps children learn. So what, these bond issues you're talking about, in Ohio, the bond issue is a building issue. So they will collect money for buildings. They'll make the case that our buildings are falling apart. We can't possibly maintain these buildings. They're falling apart too fast. So they get bond passed that goes into what they call a PI, Permanent Improvement Fund. What he found recently in one school district was that twenty-six million dollars of what the community had paid into the Permanent Improvement Fund, which is for the buildings, was being used for other things. That was illegal. You cannot use permanent improvement funds for anything that's going to last less than five years. So instead of maintaining the buildings, they were using it on other stuff illegally, illegally. So now the district has to figure out, are we going to be able to pay that back out of general funds? What do we do now? Somebody should be arrested, right? Somebody should do time for this because this is stealing from the taxpayers. So what I'm telling you is what I witnessed. Because when we went on the ballot for general funds money, we were on the ballot and they needed, they said thirty million dollars because everything was falling apart. We had leaking roofs, leaking windows, all this stuff. And I, I just simply said, why are we letting our buildings dilapidate so much? The conclusion that I came up with is that, well, we have to fence off the money for these gigantic raises in benefits. Right? So we're not going to improve our buildings because going to the community and saying our buildings are falling apart, which you know they don't want, the community doesn't want your buildings falling apart, that they will fund that. And then once you get that money into an account, looks to me like you can just blow it in any way you want to. And that could be paying benefits. I mean, that's not legal, but nobody's watching them. In Ohio, supposedly, this, the state reviews, financially reviews or audits. But even one of those auditors told me, it is so on the surface, we don't look for stuff like that. We're not paid to look like, for stuff like that, like embezzlement. We're not paid to look at these permanent improvement funds to see how they're spent. They don't even do that. So they always get this gold star. Look, look at your accounting and how beautiful it is. Well, all the while, they're taking from the money that they're supposed to be using to keep these buildings up to date, and they're spending it on what I call the adults. It's an adult-centered system. And they, they think of every way, this is my experience, they think of every way they can to manipulate the community into giving them more cash. So we've gotten to a place now, Sheri, where people can no longer afford their homes because they have bled it dry. They've bled the community dry by using these sob stories about leaking windows and leaking roofs. So once we had somebody come in, we had a budget and finance committee run by two of my friends who I knew would get to the bottom of this. They not only found that thirty million dollars, proving we didn't need it. They found another twelve million dollars. And we immediately then replaced a whole fleet of buses because they said our buses were falling apart and breaking down and leaving students on the side of the road and all this terrible stuff that, you know, if we didn't get the money, this was going to continue. Their buildings were falling apart. They had leaking roofs and, and, um, I thought, that's just not true. So what we did was we said, hey, we're flush with cash now. How about you tell us what things were really falling apart so that we could fix them now? All of a sudden, that roof didn't leak, and those windows didn't either. It was all false. It was, they said what they wanted to say to get people to pass these levies. And I found that so deceptive and deceitful that I said, guys, I am not going to lie to this community anymore, and I, I hope that we stop doing that. We have a crisis of confidence in our school district, and there's a reason for that. This district keeps lying to them. And I think we need to stop that. Let's listen to them. They said no to that levy four times. Let's, let's just start listening. They want us to spend differently. Let's do that. But that includes keeping up those buildings.
Right. Yes, it's, it's a mess. It's totally a mess. So you described that very well from an inside perspective that most people don't understand. So we need, we need to take a short break, but when we come back, I'd like to ask you about what you believe the main qualities and convictions someone should have to be a good school board member. So don't go away. I'll be back with my interview with Kelly Coles right after this.
The April twenty twenty-five New York Times Magazine article entitled, Have We Been Thinking About ADHD All Wrong? Exposes the Record High Rates of Diagnosis and Challenges Assumptions About Treatment. The National Institute of Mental Health conducted a large study comparing stimulant drug treatments with non-drug approaches for ADHD. Its chief investigator recently stated that after thirty-six months, the benefits of stimulant medication vanished entirely. He no longer supports stimulant treatment, admitting it is not helpful in the long term. This challenges decades of medical practice. U.S. Parents Involved in Education encourages parents to read this report carefully and to question drug-based treatments. We also hope the Make America Healthy Again Commission will enact new policies prioritizing safe, effective approaches. For more information and to join our movement, visit USPI dot org and connect with us at USPI on Facebook and X.
Welcome back to Unmasking Government Schools with Sheri Few. With me today is Kelly Coles, founder and leader of the National School Boards Leadership Council. So Kelly, let's talk about what makes a good school board member. What are the qualities or convictions, uh, that voters should look for? And how does your council help equip them to succeed?
Thank you, Sheri, for giving me this opportunity because I've thought about that for at least ten years. I was on a school board, on two school boards, but one of them from two thousand and ten to two thousand and fourteen. And during that time, I thought that I, I had just entered a la-la land, a bizarre place where the truth is a lie and a lie is the truth. And I'm not sure anybody really understood what truth was because they didn't seem to say it very often. But I did know that my other school board members had joined the board for good reasons. They just listened to the wrong, um, trainers. They were listening to the OSBA, Ohio School Board Association. And the Ohio School Board Association, as soon as a school board member is sworn in, they're whisked away to a weekend with OSBA. Every state has this kind of association, School Board Association. And they've been in business training school board members for at least sixty-five years. So they've perfected their art on convincing school board members. And here's what they said to me when I went to that weekend. Your job is to be a cheerleader for your district. Your job is to do whatever the superintendent treasure tell you to do. You hired them. Now you have to trust them. Uh, your job is to not walk through the buildings. It makes people nervous. Your job. And they just filled the weekend with this, these kinds of statements. And I knew this was a bizarre, again, a bizarre place to be because I knew the community had hired me to go in there to not be those things. Because I, I wasn't the kind of person that cared what they thought of me. I really cared about the students first. And I wanted to say, every decision needed to center on, how does this help children learn? How does this keep children safe? And how does this create transparency with my community that pays all the bills? You know, and much of what they were spewing at us made no sense, if you think about it that way. And I would look around the room, though, to all these new people elected to school boards. And I was thinking, do they believe what we're being told here? And the answer was yes, they believed what they were being told there. They, oh, that's my job. Okay, well, we have to just preach and, uh, absorb everything they're saying to us and, and act like it's the gospel. So my other board members, Sheri, they often would just parrot whatever the administration said to them. They would say the same thing to the community. Well, we need this money. Or, you know, we're going to fall off the financial cliff. And I, and I would just turn it around a little bit and say, well, our children aren't going to get stupid if we don't get this money. But what we, what we want to do is listen to the community. And I didn't want to put the levy back on the ballot again for the fifth time, and so I said no to that. And of course, you get a lot of hate mail. Here's what we need in a, the, the characters of a good school board member. You need to be someone that doesn't care what other people think of you, that you work for one, one. That's it. You work for truth. And if what you're being told doesn't pass your smell test, I would often write it down. So I couldn't rebut what they were saying at the time. But I could write it down and I could go home and do some more homework. And then I would come back and I would share what I found out with my other board members. Because that's your job, is to get the majority to agree with you. I would share with my other board members. And guess what, guys? When I messaged it my way, instead of the administrator's way, they agreed with me. Within a couple of months, they were voting with me. We all agreed to stop tenure, even though that's not what administration wanted. We agreed to stop giving the administrators bonuses, even though that's not what they wanted. So they stopped being so foolish as to listen to everything their superintendent treasure told them or anybody else for that matter. They started thinking, okay, I'm gonna, you know, ask Coles, or I'm going to listen to Coles, who has done the homework. So we need somebody that doesn't care what other people think of them. They don't have to have people giving them kudos, pats on the back and gold stars in their emails. Guys, you can tell from the first, uh, sentence on an email that it's a nasty gram. And you do not have to read it. That is not something you have to read. So I stopped reading all of that. I stopped reading all the negative comments on Facebook. I stopped listening to the people at the podium who were telling me off every meeting for thirty minutes. And I would just learn, I learned to say, thanks for your opinion. And in my head, I would say, have a seat, because you're not my boss. You didn't vote for me. God is my boss. And, and as God is my witness, I am here for the right reasons. And I'm going to stay focused on this tunnel that I'm in and making sure that the children are the focus and their academics are the focus and their safety and their transparency. There are three things my organization folk, laser focuses every school board member on. And that's academic improvement. We have to have that, or we will lose our nation very, very quickly. We have to have safety, and that means the ideologies that are in that makes children feel bad. You know, we have a national crisis, Sheri, and it's on chronic truancy. Children no longer want to come to school. So when I talk about safety, I'm not talking about active shooters, weapons, things like that. I'm talking about that. Plus, the bigger issue is there's something very unsafe in our curriculum. There's something very unsafe about the bullying they're getting from the staff and faculty at our schools. It's very serious. Our children don't want to go anymore. So academic outcomes, improving them. It's safety, including the, getting these ideologies out of there that are harming children, that are abusive and harming them, both short term and long term. And being transparent with the community. Start telling them everything. Have these external reviews. Have an external, uh, curriculum review. Have an external, uh, financial review. And guys, if you do that, and we're talking about candidates in the audience that might be in the audience or community members thinking about it. When you do that, you got to think, there's going to be people who say, why would you do that? You don't trust your treasurer. How dare you? I mean, saying all kinds of things. Don't listen to them. You know you're doing the right thing. End of story. You don't care what they think of you. You care what somebody thinks of you, and it's not them. Okay, so you got to stay focused, but, but more important, are you a good listener? And you would think from all the talking I'm doing, I'm not a good listener, but I am. When people are talking and I think they really have some value here, I'm going to listen to them. The people at the podium telling you off or the people writing them nasty grams, you don't have to listen to. You want to listen to people who are there for the same reason you are, and that's to get children to learn, to improve American academics significantly, guys. We have to do this quickly. To get the ideologies out of there that harm these children, short term and long term, harm them because our suicide rates are out through the roof. Our chronic truancy through the roof. Children don't want to go to school. And when, when they're in school, they're getting somehow abused and bullied and things in their head or conjuring up negativity. Okay, that's a problem. But we have people who will do curriculum reviews. Get on board with that. Say that sounds reasonable. Why wouldn't we? And we're going to hire somebody that's not encumbered by these local relationships. We're going to hire people from outside our state. That's the best I would suggest. Don't care what people think. Be a person who wants to find out the rest of the story, who likes to go do your homework and find out the facts. There's a lot of them. There are at least eighty videos, Sheri, on our Rumble channel, the NSBLC Rumble channel. And there they get all of this advice free. Just go there and start watching. We have about ninety thousand views a month.
That's, that's an amazing resource. And so I'll have you mention that again at the end of the show where they can find those resources. So let's move on to another topic. So let's talk about curriculum. So you know that there's, um, these ideologies being pushed on children, um, Marxist theories, oppressor oppressed. You know, we talk about all these topics on this show frequently. Uh, it's, it's pervasive in every school, in every state. And so don't think it's not your school district because it's there as well. So parents are frustrated because they can't see what their children are learning. And I think that's why we saw such great pushback during COVID because the kids were home on their Chromebooks, parents were home, and they saw what their children were learning. A lot of education even has moved to, um, online learning. Or they don't come on with textbooks anymore or worksheets and the like because they're doing all of their work online at school. And parents really don't have a clue what's in their curriculum, and they don't have access to it. So what, what do you advise on that front? So what, what do you advise on that front?
I'd say we need to keep, keep up the litigation. Now, it's, it sounds shameful for me to say that. But in, in every case, parents have the right to see that curriculum. So do the community members. But, but for parents, it's embedded. It's embedded in FERPA, it's embedded, embedded in PPRA, lots of, and you know this, you're probably telling them this every single podcast, but you have the right to see that stuff. If the board has entered into a contract where the supplier of curriculum has said, this is proprietary, may not be shared, that's not true. That can't be true. That would be illegal because the parents have the right to have access. School board, make sure that who's ever sending you curriculum, whoever is bringing in books, that there's no signature on how they can't share it with anybody. But what that proprietary note means is that somebody can't download that curriculum, those textbooks, those teaching manuals, whatever it is, and then use it in their own school. It doesn't mean that the parents can't have access. It doesn't mean that. So assert your rights to see it. If the school board, and you have to shame the school board sometimes and just say, why would you enter into a contract that breaks the law? My access is, is the law. It is a public document. You have public, you have sunshine laws in every state that says you have access to that curriculum. If they say you can't have access to that, then just say, then our students don't belong? Neither does my money. I want my money back. I mean, start billing them. I would start doing something pretty major. Sending them invoices to get your money back, just say, no, I can't see what you're doing, so you can't have my money. If you don't want my input, then don't take my money. It's that simple. So you go in and talk to them at board meetings. They may cut off public participation, then start writing to them. I tell everybody, there's two things that influence school board members the most, and that's headlines and litigation. And we may have to bring them both. Because if they're denying us access to what we purchased, that's a problem. You know, you understand, Sherri, and everybody else I'm sure understands that you can't have access to their medical records, right? That's private. You can't have access to some of the other things for a student. But what they're seeing, every parent should insist on seeing what their student sees. It should be online, Sherri. And the only time you can't have access is like never. But, but a bigger problem that I noticed was that in the teaching manuals, it tells teachers to do things that you wouldn't find in the textbook. Like ask them, in this math problem, just for small example, that, oh, Sherri got five apples and Johnny got seven apples. How do you think it made the class feel that Johnny got more apples than, than Sherri? That's the question that the teacher's supposed to ask as a follow-up. You wouldn't see that in the book, if a parent looked at a book. So I'm saying you get those teaching manuals and you'll see the kinds of questions that the publisher gives to them. But Sherri, I don't know if the listeners know this, but in Texas, they fired all the K through 12 publishers because they have Texas law that prohibits any of this DEI, CRT, SEL, all this emotional stuff. It has to be patriotic. That's by Texas law. Their publishers just kept ignoring them and inserting it in anyway. So finally, Texas said, okay, none of you will bid the contracts here. And it's millions, if not billions of dollars that these publishers lost because they couldn't, they couldn't provide books that they didn't embed some of this crap in. And so Texas has created their own curriculum and it's free to everybody who wants it. You could go online and download all their curriculum for, it's K through five, math and English. They're right now working on, and I think they're closing up the loop on science. They also, I said, well, then, you know, one of my board members is on the Texas Board of Education. And I said, well, okay, what, one of the problems is that our, our assessments, our tests, our state standardized tests are written for that indoctrinated curriculum. So our students won't perform well on these tests. And it won't be because they don't necessarily know the material, but it'll be because they are not indoctrinated to answer in the same way. And she said, we're developing our own test assessments as well. So you have a couple of options, school districts. You can go to Classical Conversations to adopt your curriculum, which is publishable. You can go to Hillsdale, they have curriculum. And you can go to Texas, they have curriculum for you. And I'd say, don't ever sign a contract that says you can't share their curriculum on your website open to the public. No way should that contract be signed. If it is, shame on you, school board.
It's interesting that you brought up the term proprietary. So let me share with you my experience. So my local school district claimed they weren't teaching critical race theory, but in a public forum, the superintendent said, but we are training our teachers in culturally relevant pedagogy, which I knew, of course, was critical race theory. So I challenged him.
Right.
And I said, okay, then I would like to see the training materials. He said, no problem, just email me, I'll send them to you. I emailed him and he responded, you'll need to fool you that. So what I like to tell people is anytime they tell you, you need to fool you it, it means they have something to hide. So it went so far as they refused to provide me the PowerPoint presentation from the professor who had provided the training, who I knew was steeped in it at our USC College of Education. And I was denied access because it was proprietary. That was the very term they used. I sued them, Kelly. I really didn't want to spend that much money suing them, but it was just the point of it made me so angry. And I wish I had talked to you about it back then. I may have appealed. But the state judge ruled in their favor, would not allow me access. So I lost the money I spent on my lawyer. And I was told by my lawyer that it's very rare that you can win a lawsuit against the government, which obviously our government schools are government. So it was a sad situation. I'm, I'm sure, I'd love to hear your insight on that, but let's make it brief because I have one more question I want to ask you before we get to the closing.
Yeah, my insight is we have to bring litigation. I just want a case where I was personally involved in Colorado Springs D49. The board president had me escorted out for holding a sign asking him to resign. So what we're, we're going to have to do is keep speaking out and up. But the jury in Colorado Springs ruled in our favor on all counts. So they actually fined the school board president more than they fined the district in this case, and they will have to pay our legal fees. So in some of these cases, when they're constitutional, the legal fees are reimbursed by the loser, by the district. And so these pro bono lawyers are out there. But in your case, when you're talking about a state law, it's hard to find somebody to take those pro bono. But then you have to make it public that you want to sit in. How about asking that? Can I sit in on this training? If the answer is no, again, alarm bells. So I think articles, your citizen journalists, your Facebook pages, your social media has to blast these articles that we write up. We need our citizen journalists to write up these articles. And trust me, they'll go viral within far more than the fake media does. We have to start writing our own articles on this because the outrage should be there. You should have community members saying, what the heck? What are you telling these teachers? And how damaging is that to our children? It's very damaging.
Well, I agree. And I'm afraid my community is a lost cause. You know, since I've been focused on the national level, I really haven't had time to fight the local battles, but I kind of wish I had fought that one a little harder. So let's move on to my last question before we do our closing questions, which is the same questions I ask all my guests before we close. But what about open meetings and open record laws? I understand that there's a widespread problem with the school boards ignoring these laws.
Absolutely. They act like they don't even exist. And, and I find our legislators hesitant to actually put any teeth in the laws. So Sherri, what you're doing and what I'm doing is effective, but we need groups that will go in and talk to the legislators and just say, look, they're trampling all over your laws. You guys look like a joke because nobody's abiding by your laws. The only laws that are being applied is to the, the rest of us. So is it really a two-tiered society where laws don't matter inside the public sector? They only matter in the private sector? Because that's what it looks like. You guys are looking pretty feckless. And either, either you step up to the plate and put some teeth in these things, or just never mind. You all need to go home and just retire because you're not doing anything to protect our rights. And remember, the oath of office is to support the US Constitution, which provides for our rights to be protected. That's what they're swearing an oath to, is to protect our rights. And when they don't do that and they say, hey, well, I at least sponsored this bill, it doesn't matter. You've made it milquetoast when there's no teeth to it. When they can say, yeah, yeah, that law exists, but we don't have to follow it inside this district. And we have people, have you ever heard of a mandamus action?
No.
Okay, so it's something you can do yourself as a citizen. There's a man here in Ohio who's bringing, golly, I mean, probably, I'm thinking he brings 60, 70 a year, where he sues school districts for violating the Ohio laws, sunshine law. And he's very effective. He often gets settlements, but they often will change policy and change what they're doing because they had this lawsuit. But that goes public, is that there's a lawsuit. So he puts, he's not a lawyer. He pushes his own mandamus actions, which is a lawsuit filed by a citizen. He's got the lingo down. He does, he does it a lot. He watches these school board meetings and he boom, he throws another one at him, he throws another one at him. Right now, I think he's got three or four against Big Walnut here in Columbus. He's got three or four against Stone Monroe up in Ohio. So a citizen of South Carolina can do mandamus actions, sue the district yourself. It doesn't take it, it's like $85, I think, to file that. And you can represent yourself and just gather the proof.
That's interesting. That, and that's a great bit of insight for our audience because I have parents reach out to me all the time. I know you probably do too, with, with their stories. And they're like, I cannot believe, you know, I've talked to the superintendent. I had one contact me recently, said I contacted the attorney general, you know, she just, nobody will listen. And so that's, that's a great bit of information there too, that we will pass along. So I need to take another short break. And when we come back, I'd like to ask you the two questions I ask all my guests before closing the show. Don't go away. I'll be back with my interview with Kelly Coles right after this. There is no definitive biological test for ADHD, yet parents have been told for decades that their child's brain is biologically impaired and requires medication. Parents often are shamed into medicating their children under pressure from doctors and educators who claim this is necessary for their child's success. The New York Times Magazine reviewed several studies showing stimulant medications do little to improve cognitive ability or academic achievement. One 2022 study found that despite better classroom behavior, medication did not translate into improved learning outcomes. U.S. Parents Involved in Education praised that the Make America Healthy Again Commission will challenge the prevailing medical narrative and support parents who want safer choices. And we encourage parents to resist the pressure to medicate their children and carefully consider alternatives. For more information and to join our movement, visit USPI dot org and connect with us at USPI on Facebook and X. Welcome back to Unmasking Government Schools with Sherri Few. With me today has been Kelly Coles, founder and leader of the National School Boards Leadership Council. Kelly, we close our show with two important questions. What concerns you most about what's happening in education today and what gives you hope?
Well, what concerns me the most is that, you just mentioned it, inside these districts, the people are so busy hiding and disguising the truth from the community and the parents that it's frightening me that these kids are still being sent into these buildings. I fight every day to fix public education when a lot of my friends, family and people around me are saying, let it self-destruct, let it go away. And I'm thinking, but in the meantime, we have children in these buildings being taken advantage of from an ideology. And these adults are going along with it rather than protecting them. I'll tell you what, go watch some videos of Cobb County, Georgia. There's a superintendent there that is protecting his students. He doesn't care what anybody thinks of him, but he's a good superintendent. If we could get more like him, Cobb County, Georgia, go watch the YouTube videos. I've talked to their administrative staff. I did a webinar, it's on our Rumble channel with one of their people. And their philosophy is very different, Sherri, but they are like a diamond in the rough. There are very few superintendents willing to do anything that bucks the teachers' union. And the teachers' union is in full control of public education. And I'm saying it out loud, they're communists. They want the communist ideology. I don't even say socialist, that's a nice way of putting it, but that's on the road to communism. What they want is full control. What gives me hope is that more and more people like us are out there telling people, please, don't think I'm a lunatic. Look into it yourself. Go to the buildings, see if you can get in. Shouldn't you be allowed to go in, at least after school? Shouldn't you be allowed to go into impromptu? Shouldn't you be allowed to look at the curriculum that you're paying for? So if they say you have no skin in the game, you have no students in this school, just say, well, my money is my skin. You have my skin. Anybody that pays state, or excuse me, local, state and federal taxes is paying for your public school. So even me in Ohio, if I go to your school district in South Carolina, I have skin in your game, Sherri. They're using my tax dollars to run your school. They're using state and federal money.
Right.
They're using my federal money. So I say, I have skin in your game. I have the right to give you input. If you don't want my input, stop taking my money. And that's not going to happen. The system's become all about the money and the ideology that's embedded in it. That must stop. I'm grateful that people are waking up. I'm grateful that there are people who are out there telling what's happening. These children deserve better. And the communities pay for it for better than what we're getting. I want to save public education because we have kids in there right now that need protection. Stand between the tyrant and that child, please, help us.
Amen. That's a wonderful way to end. I appreciate your hope. And I really appreciate you joining me today and for, you know, all that important work that you're doing. It's so critical. I, I love that you, you started out as a state organization, then went national when you saw the need was there. And you're a great resource to people looking to run for school board, people that are already on the school board, or those who are newly elected, especially with the training that you offer at your organization. So why don't you tell our audience how they can get involved with your work and where they can find these resources?
Wonderful. Love to. So NSBLC dot U S. Go there and register. You're, you're, you're going to start to get our newsletters. You will be put on our mailing list so that you can join our webinars. They're always free. Every time I interview somebody and we have this kind of discussion like I am with Sherri, they're free. You come on, just register and come on. You know, I've got tremendous opposition to saying what the truth is. And we don't care. We have to be people who don't care. We stand for fact, we stand for truth. And of course, embedded in some of that is, is our opinion based on our experiences. So I definitely do some of that, but a lot of it is just the facts of what I saw. But the fact is, across the country, things have gone completely wrong in our public education system and the children are being abused. So NSBLC dot U S. My email is NSBLC, the number four, ed, just ed, at gmail dot com. Go to our Rumble channel. So you can, I think it's NSBLC Rumble channel. We have all, we're on social media, all over the place. And I'm going to start working, Sherri, with a Leadership Institute who also trains school board members. There are several organizations now that train school board members. And that's because we see this huge problem that somebody has to address. So there are at least three or four different organizations that have joined the national, you know, school board training. The Leadership Institute will go to whoever wants it, whatever state they want it at, just get some people there and we'll start training both candidates, community members, and school board members on here's what we've got to do to fix this. The children deserve it. That's where we all are.
Amen. That's fantastic. So I'll look forward to talking to you more about the Leadership Institute and bringing you guys to, here to South Carolina and some of our other states where we have chapters. I'm looking forward to talking with you more about that. So thanks again, Kelly, for being on our show. To our listeners, if you found today's discussion eye-opening, please share this episode with a friend. Give us a five-star rating and subscribe to stay informed. You can connect with us on Facebook and X at USPI and visit USPI dot org to join the movement. Until next time, I'm Sherri Few. Thank you for your support of USPI and our efforts to unmask government schools.
U.S. Parents Involved in Education is a nonprofit coalition dedicated to restoring local control of education and parental authority. By empowering parents to reclaim responsibility for their children's learning and encouraging[1784.54]